I would like to call this meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board to order. It's April 10th, it is 6:00 PM, and all board members are present except Mr. Green. So let us first do Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Already announced, Mr. Green is missing, the rest of us are here. Agenda modifications, there is one, we will not need the executive session number 14 at the end, so we can drop that off your agenda. Okay, spotlights on success, Mr. Carlisle.
Thank you, yes, we'll start our spotlights tonight. I'll move over there. We'll start our spotlights tonight by featuring our volunteers of the month, and I'll invite Karina Lee up to the podium.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask the principal of Cummings Elementary, Martina Mangan, and her smart coordinator, Ann Brightwell, to join Assistant Superintendent Carlisle and Chair Kylo to the front. So our volunteer of the month for April 2018 is the smart coordinator, Ann Brightwell, at Cummings Elementary School. Every Thursday morning from October through May, a group of eight to 10 dedicated volunteers gather at Cummings Elementary School in Kaiser to read one-on-one with pre-K through third grade students who need a little extra help with their reading. The volunteers are known as smart readers. SMART stands for Start Making a Reader Today, and it is a statewide program offered in many of our Salem Kaiser schools. Students at Cummings who need support with their reading get to work one-on-one with a volunteer. Around 25 students get the opportunity every single week. Ann Brightwell is the smart coordinator at Cummings Elementary. She is a retired Salem Kaiser teacher who taught in our district for many years, including at Miller and Four Corners Elementarys. Ann coordinates schedules with the adult volunteers and coordinates reading opportunities for kids with Cummings teachers. She escorts students from their classrooms to the cafeteria when it's their turn to read with a tutor, and walks them back to their classes 30 minutes later when their time is finished. Each student gets to select one brand-new book a month to read with their smart volunteer. The students get to keep the book and are encouraged to read it at home. Cummings Elementary Principal Martina Mangan says it warms her heart to see how many adult volunteers read with her students every week like clockwork. Many of the volunteers are retired while others are still working but make arrangements with their employers allowing them to read with kids. Most of the volunteers do live in the Cummings neighborhood. Cummings Elementary and all of Salem Kaiser School District would like to thank smart coordinator Ann Brightwell and the dedicated smart volunteers who share their love of reading with kids. Congratulations on being recognized as our volunteer of the month for April 2018.
Next, we have our business partner of the month, and I'll invite Erin Harada up from our communications department.
Great. So this time I'd like to invite Lisa Olson representing Chapman Hill Elementary School, along with Jeremy and Heidi McKay, owners of West Salem Ace Hardware, up to the front, please. So our business partner of the month for April 2018 is West Salem Ace Hardware, nominated by Chapman Hill Elementary School. West Salem Ace Hardware is a family-owned business, and Jeremy and Heidi McKay believe in giving back to their community. Chapman Hill Principal Rachel Harm says whenever her school calls Jeremy and Heidi asking for support, they always find a way to lend a hand. West Salem Ace Hardware is one of the sponsors of Chapman Hill's annual Jogathon fundraiser. Last October, the school raised $17,000 during its Jogathon. The money is used to pay for school field trips and helps teachers purchase school supplies. West Salem Ace Hardware recently donated 35 five-gallon buckets for physical education and music classes. The buckets are used for new rhythmic movement and drumming activity that students love. West Salem Ace Hardware also donated shopping carts used to store and move rainy-day recess supplies indoors when recess is held inside. Jeremy helps Chapman Hill with its fourth-grade dictionary distribution and with getting $500 grants to support science and math education through his participation in the Rotary Club of West Salem. Heidi volunteers several hours each week in Mrs. Reddiger's second-grade class. Heidi works with students who need help with assignments and leads reading groups. The couple's son is also in Mrs. Reddiger's class. Chapman Hill wishes to offer an enthusiastic thank you to Jeremy and Heidi McKay and to West Salem Ace Hardware for all the support. Congratulations on being named Salem Kaiser's business partner of the month.
The next two spotlights will be presented by our Director of High Schools, Larry Ramirez.
Good evening, everyone. If I can call Sprague up to the front, Principal Swanson, Colony Tolan, students Rachel Peterson, Lexie Waterman, and Brenda Marcus to the front. This year's Salem Kaiser Education Foundation Awesome 3000 t-shirts feature original artwork drawn by Sprague High School senior Rachel Peterson. Chosen from 84 entries, Rachel's artwork shows the SCEFF mascot Geo crossing the finish line while shooting stars in the background. Each year, SCEFF invites young artists in our schools to come up with designs for the Awesome 3000 timed run held the first Saturday in May. In addition to seeing her artwork on 5,000 t-shirts and thousands of registration forms and posters, Rachel received a $100 check. She also earned a $250 contribution to the Sprague High School Art Department. This year, the first, second, and third-place art contest winners were all from Sprague. The second-place design was drawn by Lexie Waterman. The third-place design was created by sophomore Brenda Marcus. All three students studied art in Colony Tolan's drawing classes. Karina Lee, the executive director of SCEFF, says all the drawings capture the energy and spirit of the Awesome 3000. Rachel will be onsite at the Awesome 3000 on May 5th to sign t-shirts and posters and programs featuring her artwork. Congratulations to the Sprague students and your artistic success in the 2018 SCEFF drawing contest. I'd now like to call forward Principal Jim Miller and student Sarah Calvin Stuffel. Sarah Calvin Stuffel, senior at West Salem High School, is the winner of the 2018 Poetry Out Loud competition held last month. Competing against seven other regional finalists from across the state, Sarah memorized and recited her favorite poem, "Degrees of Gray in the Phillipsburg," by Richard Hugo. She presented the poem with a heartfelt and articulate delivery. Sarah will be traveling to Washington, DC on April 24th to compete in the 2018 National Finals at George Washington University. The Poetry Out Loud program began in 2005, and it helps students explore literacy while building their self-confidence through public speaking and research. Sarah's win has special meaning for West Salem High School community. In 2007, the high school English teacher Christina Eddy, who loved the arts and had a passion for music and poetry, brought Poetry Out Loud to West Salem High. In December of 2016, Christina passed away after a brave five-year battle with cancer. In her memory, West Salem High continues to participate in Poetry Out Loud. Congratulations to Sarah on winning the 2018 poetry contest, and good luck at the national contest.
We have one person on the list, and that would be Mindy Merritt. Oh, wait.
Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, directors, and Vice Superintendent Kelly Carlisle. My name is Mindy Merritt, SKEA president, and I live at 2381 Teal Drive, Southeast Salem Kaiser. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation. Thank you for your support of SKEA educators. Our members work tirelessly every day to support the students of our schools. We give of ourselves without solicitation to ensure that every child is welcomed into an environment where they can feel safe, focus on learning, and thrive. We work extra hours, attend trainings outside of our normal hours, and at times without pay, and carry ever-increasing loads because we care about our students and our schools. We know we need to be there as the warm and friendly face for each child to succeed. We provide the fuel for our students' dreams. We plant the seeds of knowledge, carefully tending to them and watching them grow. We hope for a time when we can work collaboratively with the school board to achieve adequate funding. We anxiously await an opportunity to work with you to create systems where our students can thrive. We appreciate this recognition and look forward to continuing to partner with you to ensure our students have the appropriate materials, class sizes, time for recess, time to meet with counselors, time for art, time for science, and access to extracurricular activities. Thank you for all that you do for our members and for our students. It does not go unnoticed, and it is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. Okay, that's all that was on the list. Action items. First one is the proclamation, which I will read, and then we'll entertain a motion in a second. All right, thank you. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world, and whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore, the Salem Kaiser School District Board of Directors proclaim May 7th through 11th, 2018 to be Teacher Appreciation Week and encourage all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the proclamation for teachers this week and offer them the best, May 7th through 11th.
Okay, is there a second? Sharon, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? All right, Chuck.
I've been in education for over 40 years and always have admired the great job that teachers do. The last three or four years, I've had the unique experience of being out at CTEC out on Portland Road, and I think as board members, a lot of times, you know, our exposure to teachers or what we see at board meetings or whatever, but if you get a chance to be inside of a school and see all of the demands on our teachers and how hard they work, it is just great to have one week out of the year where we go out of our way to say that we appreciate them. And my hope would be is that rather than just proclaim that and have that be, you know, an important part of what we're doing as a board, is that we go out into the schools and tell the teachers how much we really appreciate it. I know at CTEC, I see just miracles happening every day with the teachers that are so dedicated to doing the very best they can, so I think it's wonderful that as a board, we're recognizing that week. But I know I plan to do something physical about it and go out of my way to let teachers know how much we appreciate what they've done and the sacrifices they've made for our district to put us in the spot where we are.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the proclamation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda would be the CTEC lease agreement. I understand we have one individual who is going to declare a conflict of interest, or at least refrain.
Yes, as I said, I'm out at CTEC almost every day, and I will listen attentively to the discussion but will not participate in the discussion or any votes that happen because of a potential conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wolf.
Yes, good evening, Chair Kylo, Assistant Superintendent Carlisle, members of the board. Excuse me, tonight you have an action item, which is the approval of the new CTEC lease, and I wanted to go over briefly some of the highlights of that successor lease. Basically, what has triggered this is the current lease with Mountain West CTEC is no longer in effect pursuant upon the agreement of this lease because Mountain West CTEC has donated the CTEC premises to Community Resource Trust Career Technical Education Center, or CRT CTEC, which is a local nonprofit limited liability company, and this is a successor lease that generally follows the original lease that the district has had with Mountain West CTEC. And so you can see in the bulleted items one through seven, the term of the lease, the original and the new are essentially the same, right around 17 years with both five-year options executed. The dollar amount is exactly the same, which would be $1 per year for the lease. Also, there are protections as far as the transfer of the property. If the new owner, CRT CTEC, were to transfer the property, they couldn't do it without the consent of the district. Just as Mountain West could terminate the lease, CRT CTEC can, but it also triggers a requirement that the property would be offered as a donation, the premises, to the district. And we are still indemnified for any environmental claims through CRT CTEC, which is, the indemnification flows all the way up through the original agreement back to Mountain West Investment Corporation. These issues were raised by the board in separate briefings and were incorporated in the lease that you have in front of you. The one thing that I would bring your attention to is number seven, which the deed for the donated property will contain a restriction that if the district accepts the donation, it must use the property for educational purposes for a period of not less than 20 years, and that's in Section 53. So that's a significantly different term than the original lease, and I wanted to call your attention to that. And simultaneously, the district and Mountain West CTEC are also negotiating a successor or follow-on MOU. As you all may recall, the current MOU served its purpose well when it started, this whole process, but certainly is outdated and needs to be brought up to date, and that's what we're doing now. You also have the exhibits, one through three, which are reflective of the, or A, B, and C, which are reflective of the phases of CTEC, phases one, two, and three. So it's recommended that you approve this lease between the school district and CRT CTEC for the use of the building of the Career and Technical Education Building, subject to the board's future approval of the new memorandum of understanding with Mountain West, and that you authorize the chief operations officer to execute the lease with CRT CTEC after the board approves the MOU with Mountain West.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Marty?
I make a motion that we approve the lease agreement.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, thank you.
Kathy, thank you. Okay, now would people like to speak to the motion? I'm not seeing any. Kathy?
I'll just make a quick, I think that the city of Salem and Salem Kaiser School District is enormously fortunate to have received this donation, and I applaud our own staff to have made just wonderful use of it, and I, going over this lease, could find nothing that I questioned. I think it was something that had to be done and brought up to date, and I'm pleased with it.
Okay, anyone else? Jesse?
Yeah, I'd like to thank really quick all of the staff, and Paul, and everybody who's helped to look at this, since every time that we've looked at it, all the changes that were updated, and it seems like every, I mean, all of us have drilled it, and it seems to be really, really concrete, and also seems to protect us as well, in case anything ever happens, so thank you so much for that.
Anyone else?
I have a question I want to make sure I understand before we vote. So the length of this lease, this can be extended for 10 years, 12 years? What's the life of the lease as presented, without the donation?
The life of the lease is for the first 55 months, which is a little over four and a half years.
Correct.
And then two five-year extensions.
So 14 years.
A little over 14.
A little over 14 years.
14 and a half.
And then at the end of the 14 years, if the land is donated to us, then we're committed to another 20 years.
That's.
So a total of 34-plus years for CTEC to exist.
Yeah, the deed, the donated property will contain a restriction that if it's accepted, and I'll defer to Mr. Decopoulos on this, but as it's stated in number seven on the board plate, there's a 20-year, not less than a period of 20-year restriction that it continued to be used for educational purposes.
So 34-plus years.
That's how I read it.
Paul?
That would be the maximum. I mean, the idea with the donation is that in the next one or two years, the property would be donated, the offer would be made to the board for the donation. We would not wait until the end of the full term. The owners clearly intend to offer the property sooner rather than later, so although it is possible that you could wait the full 14 and a half years for the offer of the donation, it is unlikely. But if that were to happen, in other words, if on the last day of the 14 and a half years, this board was offered the opportunity to accept the donation, then Section 53 would require that you use the donated property for educational purposes for another 20 years, and that is a very broad term.
Okay.
Determined by you as the board.
Okay, you clarified by concern. Thank you. Any other concerns or questions? All those in favor of accepting the CTEC lease, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Obstinate. Those opposed? Aye. Abstentions? Aye.
Aye.
So the vote is for, 1, 1. Okay, so it passes. Okay, thank you. The next item would be the consent calendar. Is there, are there any items on the consent calendar that you want pulled? Anyone have a consent calendar item? Grants, personnel actions, or accelerated advancement? I'm not seeing any, no, no. Chuck? No. Jesse? No. Marty? No. All right. All those in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. We have no readings tonight, and we do have, we're now down to reports, Mr. Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. We have three reports to share with you this evening, and we'll start by bringing our chief operations officer back up to the podium, Mr. Wolf, who will share with us a report on executive limitation 10.
Okay, good evening again. So you have executive limitation 10, the facilities limitation in front of you, and, excuse me, we don't have any evidences of noncompliance through the report, and in keeping with previous summary reports here, if you, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have, but this is probably one of the most straightforward executive limitations, and essentially with the effort of the long-range facility plan and the current effort with the bond, we are meeting most of the long-range facility needs currently.
Okay. Any questions about the executive limitation report? Any questions? Not seeing any. We normally do these by consensus, so if you're in agreement with the report, thumbs up. All right, the report is accepted as presented. Thank you, Mike. Next report would be...
We have an update on the strategic plan, item number four, and I'll invite our Director of Career and Technical Education, Jim Orth, to the podium.
Excuse me, Chairperson Kylo, Assistant Superintendent Carlisle, and board members, thank you for entertaining me. You have in front of you a long bulleted list of activities that we've been involved in for our career technical education programs across the school district, and so I'll just share a few of the comments from that, and then be open to some questions from you. I've been working in this capacity for about three and a half years now, and we've grown our career technical education programs in our high schools from 30 to 46 programs, and from six locations to 10 locations. So that's very exciting. We're at the point now where, last year, we had almost 6,800 students of our 12,000 high school students in career and technical education programs. And so, you know, it's very exciting, I think, to offer these opportunities to our students, and I think actually it's, in my opinion, imperative. Our programs are often confused between CTEC and CTE. CTEC has wonderful programs, some advanced programs, and really designed to be more state-of-the-art and a little more advanced in some ways. We have opportunities to do integrated instruction at CTEC, but we still have 40 of our 46 programs currently at our resident high schools and Roberts. And so it's sometimes part of my job to really be that clarifier to the community, and even sometimes internally to ourselves, of what CTE is in Salem Kaiser and what CTE is in general. So that's been one of the big roles that I've taken on for our department, really is educating our stakeholders and doing a lot of recruiting and retaining of our students into CTE programs. One of the things that I'm really excited about is the career trees that we've installed in each one of our CTE programs. I brought an example, not to be too show-and-telly, but I brought one of the career trees. I'm not going to leave past this so long. I know it's big, I'm sorry about that. But the idea is, in many of our career and technical education programs, traditionally, most people have only thought of one or two jobs that a student could do coming out of a career and technical education program, and what we want to help, not only our students but really the greater community, understand is that there are hundreds of jobs that are entry-level, that are technician-level, and are professional-level positions in any one of our CTE programs. And so really, our students have massive opportunity available to them when they engage in a career and technical education program. This year, one of the things that has been really exciting is the advent of high school success funds, which are ballot measure 98, that were passed by our voters last year. And so we've been really ramping up the things that we've been able to do with career technical education in our high schools, as well as even connecting with our middle schools, because the legislature allows us to utilize some of those measure 98... as well as even connecting with our middle schools because the legislature allows us to utilize some of those measure ninety-eight funds down into eighth grade. And so, we've been connecting with our middle schools and really trying to work on developing a sixth-through-twelfth-grade planning culture and helping our students prepare from middle school to transition into our high school career and technical education programs and then beyond that into the, the career pathways of their, of their choice. So, I've been engaging with Director Beyondi and many of the middle school principals and as well as the middle school elective teachers and counselors and incorporating them into some of the activities we've been doing with our CTE teachers at the high school and counselors and administrators at the high school as well. Another, another exciting activity that, that I'm super proud of is the, is our CTE and Industry Summit, a great collaboration between Salem Kaiser Public Schools and the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce. Last year, we held a one-day local conference. This year, we held a two-day and an additional pre-conference day, a three-day conference that was statewide. We had over four hundred and fifty participants, including many of our CTE students, our CTE teachers, as well as a lot of industry representation, trying to make the connection, help our community understand that when a student, an educator, and an industry partner get together, everyone benefits. We are full speed ahead on expansion and, and increasing the number of students and the number of opportunities available to our students through career technical education. You can see in our future actions, all of the fun, great activities we've got. I, I think it's fun that, because I'm, I get kind of geeked up about all of this career technical education stuff. So, I'm excited about contextual learning, not only the, the integrated instruction that we offer at CTEC, but we're going to be expanding some opportunities at West and at McNary this next year as pilots in the AMPT and the GIC, which are ways to connect algebra and geometry to career and technical education programs. So, that came out of some professional development that we provided last summer, and we're going to be able to pilot that this next, next school year at two high schools. I can go on and on, but I think in the, in the interest of some time, I'll, I'll give you an opportunity to ask me some questions or make comment.
Questions? Marty?
On the current actions, let's see, how are my readers on? Alternative education, implementing startup programs at Roberts and ECHS. I see Roberts listed, well, but I don't see ECHS listed. Is there anything specific you're doing at early college high school?
So, that's sometimes kind of more confusing than, to some folks than others. So, I kind of lump both together. I know that they're two separate entities.
My son went there, so it's a very, very separate entity.
Right, and so, we have an education pathway that's located at, at the schmeck of the campus at building fifty-one that's available to both students in Roberts and ECHS. So, I really included both because it's, it's available to both. And then, we also, at, at the State Street and Commercial Street sites, we are running, we opened up our business entrepreneurship program for students at both of those sites. And it looks a little different in each site because of the, of the difference in the, the needs at those sites.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I see you pointing. I don't know.
I pointed at Jesse.
Jesse, you had a question?
Yes.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, so, my question was on the future actions. When it says, continue planning for further expansion, it says CTEC, resident, HSS, the bond, and Roberts. What were your, were those current actions? Because these are like the current actions. So, what are your future actions regarding Roberts? Because I saw it was listed there.
So, actually, a year ago, the Cabinet asked me to dream and scheme, really, with our high school principals about what we would do. And so, we've developed an action plan at each one of our sites, what programs we would, the current programs that we have, and what would we expand of those, and what additional programs we would add if we could. And so, those were very instructive and, and are continuing to be very instructive as we've gone into the, the facilities planning phases in, in case the bond passes. And so, we, we really are, have plans at each one of our high schools to expand. At Roberts, in particular, we have a couple of ideas about, around an industrial and engineering systems program that would provide opportunities for students to learn a variety of different levels and types of mechanic work. So, we talked about having like a bicycle and skateboard shop, as well as a light motorcycle ATV, as well as perhaps a, an automotive bay. So, students could learn kind of what their interest was in that, in that area. That's the primary additional program that we saw, at least off the top of my head, right now, at Roberts.
Jesse, that is? Anyone else? Sharong?
Thank you, and thank you for all the work that you've done over the last several years.
Thanks.
Question I have is with regards to community involvement, local business. You mentioned the chamber and presentations and things like that, but for the actual programs themselves, can you give us an example of how a community organization or a business might be directly involved with one of our programs? And how we identify, you know, the needs of the community for, for jobs and how they're involved with that?
Certainly. So, we, each, each state-approved career and technical education program is required to have an industry advisory committee. And that looks different at every program. Some of those are super formal, monthly meetings, and some of those are a little less formal, two or three times a year where they're calling some of their industry partners, the teachers, and asking them to come in and give some input and feedback about the curriculum, about the equipment and materials, about professional skills that the students need. So, that's kind of the most common, ongoing, I can get very specific about a variety of different programs that have those relationships, but all are required. And so, when our programs, I said we've got forty-six programs, we have thirty-three state-approved programs and thirteen startup programs. And as their startup programs, they're developing parts of their overall program, which includes sometimes that industry advisory committee. Did I answer everything yet? Okay.
Okay, anything else? Kathy? Chuck? Okay, great. Thanks, Jim.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Our final report, I'm excited to share with you, one of our latest initiatives in the district has been the start of a new office for Equity, Student Access, and Advancement. And I'm inviting our Director of that office up to the podium, Cynthia Richardson, who's bought, brought some student guests with her.
Good evening. Assistant Superintendent Kelly Carlisle, Chairperson Paul Calo, Assistant Vice Chairperson Chuck Lee, Board of Directors, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. I'm Cynthia Richardson, Director of Student Equity Access and Advancement. I'd like to introduce to some Patrick Mulligan. Would you please stand? He works in our department and is our program associate and does an awesome job in equity work, especially in development, professional development. Darnell Hall recently accepted a teaching position at Haupt Middle School. He is teaching health and PE, and we're happy for him. But we have a vacancy in our department right now that we have posted, and hopefully, we'll be able to fill soon. I also want to recognize other people that have helped us tremendously with this department this year, and that is our Staff Equity Committee. Will you please stand? It's made up of licensed staff as well as administrators and classified staff. Thank you for your work. Parents and community members have also been a huge part of our success this year. Will you please stand if you're in the audience? Thank you. The Student Equity Committee formerly was known as the Superintendent's Leadership, Student Leadership Committee. I was asked to repurpose the committee. We had fifty-five total applications. Our students come from underrepresented populations as well as marginalized populations. We wanted students that could tell us how school was not working for them and help us in problem-solving and submitting possible solutions. We meet at a neutral site. We meet the first Thursday of every month. We provide transportation as needed. And I want to give a huge shout-out to Val Lukin. Please stand. She has been volunteering with this committee for years, has done an awesome job of keeping us focused and on task. Excuse me. The Student Equity Committee has students from every program. We added the alternative schools back in this year. They really attended well and have been just a very, very vocal support in helping us to get all of our goals accomplished this year. And these are the schools and how many students we had from each school. One of their hopes was to have their voices heard at their schools. So, we had one session where all of the principals came out and met with them so that they could tell the principals what they needed, and they created a communication plan for their schools. Another time, they asked Superintendent Perry and Chairperson Calo to come out. Their question is, was how, how are decisions made about schools? They wanted to hear from them, and we are happy that they came out and met with us. Mike Wolf came out to share the school bond proposal, and each student was able to go to their school's site and share, give input on what they felt should happen at their particular schools. I want to thank Larry Ramirez, Wendy Roberts, also Linda Myers, who also came out and shared with this group. This is our students. This was a picture of them in the Statesman Journal during the Martin Luther King March. They were captured. Two of our students spoke at that event, did an awesome job. And these are other topics that were discussed during the year. At this time, they'd like to present to you their hopes and recommendations for this committee. Thank you.
Assistant Super, Superintendent Carlisle, Chairperson Kylo, and members of the board, my name is Malia Goldblatt, and I am, I am currently a senior at Sprague High School and CTEC. And I serve on the Superintendent's Student Equity Committee. I like to discuss all the things we have learned throughout the Student Equity Committee. We have learned the meaning of equity. We have also learned the social and economical problems within our schools. We have learned how to solve them. We have learned how to collaborate within a group of people who share the same passions as us. We have learned how to share our voices and make us heard. Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent Carlisle, Chairperson Kylo, and other members of the board, my name is Savannah Satterland-Stearns. I am a senior at McKay High School and serve on the Superintendent's Student Equity Committee. I'm here to discuss our hopes and efforts on this committee pertaining to having a safer community. This is something we are very passionate about, and not just safe in terms of having a decrease in violence, but feeling safe in who we are, if that's our sexuality, our emotions, and just being ourselves. Being in school is very hard because there's people that are going to push you to try to be what they think is the ideal person. So, we feel that if our staff was more educated on what is currently happening in our schools, that means talking to our counselors more, having and feeling safe and not having restrictions to people, being mandatory reporters, you know, not having this, that we can feel safe in our discussion is very important. And the next member on our committee will further discuss this point.
Assistant Superintendent Carla, Chairperson Kylo, and members of the board, my name is Emily McCoy, and I am currently a sophomore at South Salem High School and serve on the Superintendent's Student Equity Committee. Going off of what Savannah said about our efforts around equity, we believe that we should have staff updated with today's society's issues and help students feel more comfortable to talk with a staff member at school. This will also help staff, students, and counselors to have more time to talk with. We want to create a safer environment, like she says, Savannah. In order to have better communication, we would like to, for example, we would like to have more group projects to make the students feel more comfortable with themselves and with the staff. The next person will address our hopes as a committee.
Assistant Superintendent Kelly Carlisle, Chairperson Kylo, and members of the board, my name is Giovanni Tolentino, and I am a senior at Sprague High School, and I am also a member of the Superintendent's Student Equity Committee. And one of the other hopes that I'd like to present to you is, for the committee, is the concept of redefining what it is to be in a leadership position. Because oftentimes, what we see in many schools, as I'm sure my, my fellow members can attest to and as I can attest to, it would seem that in many leadership communities and groups in, in schools across the district, there are voices that are not heard and that are not represented because oftentimes, specific groups and specific people will often be the ones who are always engaged with organizing activities and being involved with the community, often pushing away or pushing outward other students who would also like to have a voice and would also like to be included in, in, in these decision-making processes. So, as a general concept, one of our hopes is to basically be more inclusive, expand that, 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 that brand of what it means to, to be involved in leadership, what it means to, to be involved in these sorts of activities and, and basically engage with the community on a level that's much more expansive than what it currently is. And obviously, because that is ultimately the premise of what this committee was, you know, established for. So, thank you.
Assistant, Assistant Superintendent, my bad, Carlisle, Chairperson Kylo, and members of the board, my name is Melvin Bull Senior. I am a current student at South Salem High School and a member of the Superintendent's Student Equity Committee. Sorry. My hopes for this committee and the school boards is we can have, I'd like to see teachers be active role models in the lives of students, not just every student, but particularly students that come from rougher sorts of neighborhoods and district and areas. You know, kids who don't have a lot of motivation in school and those types of things. I also like, would like to see teachers connect after-school success, you know, after you graduate, what are you going to do? Connect that with core classes, like the maths and the literatures and all that. Because the question often comes up, you know, what are, what is Y equals M C X whatever going to help me with after high school? I'd really like to see that connected. Yeah, that's all I got to say. Thank you for the opportunity.
Assistant Superintendent Carlisle, Chairperson Kylo, and members of the board, my name is Justice Presley, and I am a student at South Salem High School, a sophomore. And I serve on the Superintendent's Student Equity Committee. I'm here to present on behalf of the Equity Committee what we have as far as recommendations for the Salem Kaiser School District. As a committee, we meet each month discussing what would change, what we could, what we could change as far as education within our school district. And we noticed that a reoccurring topic showed throughout our conversations pertaining to the lack of representation within our school district. As Black History Month approached within the month of February, we found that many adults within our school had not brought up the topic, leaving many kids confused and forgotten. Many kids were oblivious to the fact that we were celebrating Black History Month. As we came together, the following meeting, we discussed the ideas of somehow involving all students' heritages, ethnicities, and cultural backgrounds within our school district. And we believe that starts with more representation of diverse staff. And we believe that starts with more representation of diverse staff within our school district and starting with an appreciation month, which South Salem High School is currently working on. This allows students from the Equity Committee and students within our schools to guarantee that appreciation month will involve all students and staff within our schools. We also believe that bringing in speakers to our school for Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and so on and so forth will bring the importance and highlight the significance of celebrating our differences within school. Doing this through assemblies and or classroom time for our history class or our English classes will support the cultural background and ethnic diversities at our school and will hopefully bring us closer as a community. Creating ethnic and cultural study classes will further educate students and create a more involved environment for students, as well as updating our history textbooks and involve a wide range of cultural backgrounds to further educate us on different countries and ethnicities. As we start to leave high school, we hope and we would love to see the expansion of diversity throughout our learning, teaching, involvement of everyday life. And we have Kudzai to talk more about that.
Assistant Superintendent Carlisle, Chairperson Kylo, and members of the board. My name is Kudzai, and I am currently a junior at South Salem High School, and I serve on the Superintendent's Student Equity Committee. What I wanted to, first, I'd actually like to say thank you for allowing us all to have this opportunity to represent our committee and to share our concerns on such a powerful platform. The first thing I'd like to address is making Chromebooks. There are these computers that were just let into the school system or into the district more or available for checkout for lower-income students or actually students who just need computers because a lot of students want to succeed in, all students want to succeed in schools, but a lot of students do have some disadvantages. So in order to incorporate equity, we should make these Chromebooks available for checkout. And they can check this out for the school year. And to make this work more successfully, there could be an application process that would be coordinated with parents in order to hold students accountable for that Chromebook for the school year. And I know, like, early college, for example, does iPads. Every student gets an iPad that they return at the end of the school year. So it's something that we've seen in our district before. So it would be a successful way to work. And in that same sense, we could say, oh, but then a student wouldn't have Wi-Fi. But if we look at it, there is Wi-Fi available at cafes, at the library, even at the schools themselves. And also, there's a program in the Salem Kaiser School District that's a $10 Wi-Fi program run with Comcast that is meant for lower-income students. A second thing that I would like to address is some students not having access to certain advanced calculators when they're in pursuit of advanced math classes. And it's not fair for these students to be aspiring for a higher level of education and then be limited by not having access to a certain calculator. And these calculators are expensive. They start from like $100 and go up, and they're necessary for that math class. So two solutions that our group came up with for this is, one, to again, make a checkout kind of process because there are calculators available in the classroom, but students aren't allowed to take them home. Or a second solution that we came up with was on a district level, raising funds in order to provide these calculators for, we would start with account number of students, that's a goal. Like for South Salem High School, for example, we'd say, we're going to raise five, raise up money for five calculators to be provided at the school. Yes. And I just feel like students should be rewarded for their academic aspirations, and all students are entitled, in my opinion, to success in education. And so that's where I feel like the school board could do our part.
Good evening, everyone. Assistant Carlisle, Carlo, Chairperson Kylo, and members of the board. My name is Cade, and I'm a current student of McKay High School, and I serve on the Student Equity Committee. And on behalf of our committee, on behalf of us, we thank you for, we thank you for hearing out our concerns.
Thank you very much for your vision and support of the Student Equity Access and Advancement Committee.
Did anyone have any questions for Cynthia before she leaves? Ah, we do have one. Jessie?
It's less of a question, more of a thank you guys all for coming here, just because we, I love to hear you guys' voices and your thoughts and your ideas. And the world's never going to change unless someone comes up with an idea, right? So I just wanted to promote to you guys, if you guys were willing to stand up here and speak to us, if, when I was your age, man, I would, it would be hard to get me to even stand up and speak in front of anybody at all. So, yeah, so thank you guys for coming up here to speak with us, and let's give them one more round of applause just for that.
Anyone else have a question? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Cynthia. Next item on the agenda would be our calendar. April 24th, I know everyone will be here riveted to their seats to hear the Superintendent's Budget Message at 6:00. Also, then we have a board meeting on May the 8th, and at 7:00 PM on May the 8th, there will be a Budget Committee meeting where we will be taking public comment on the budget and budget suggestions. So plan on May 8th, it being a late evening, just to let everyone know. Thank you. I think that's it. Next would be public comment, and we have five people who've signed up for public comment tonight, not on agenda items. I would remind you, you have three minutes. The yellow light goes off when you have one minute left, the red light goes off, you're done. So we'll start with Pierce Dan Wren. We would ask you to give your name and where you live. And then we'll start the time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chair Kylo, Assistant Superintendent Carlisle, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Dan Wren, and I'm running for Marion County Circuit Court Judge in this, in the election on May 15th. Our community has a little bit of a, something we don't see every day. We have an open seat for a Marion County Circuit Court Judge, and there's three people that are running for that election who are not the incumbent. So I know sometimes when people get their ballots, they don't know any of the names. They might call friends or whatever. So I'm trying to get out to my community to just let people know who I am so they can put that name with, well, just face with that name, I guess. I want to tell you just a little bit about myself. I currently serve as a Marion County Circuit Court Judge Pro Tem for the Marion County Circuit Court. I've been doing that for the past year and a half, and I currently am at the Marion County Criminal Annex where I work every day to try to keep our community safe. I keep, I make decisions on bail and who's in custody, who's out of custody, and that's a really important job that I do at the court. Before I took a position with the court, I worked for ten years in private practice where I represented children and families that were involved in the juvenile justice system. And so I have a deep passion for helping make sure that children are safe and our community can hopefully do better by those vulnerable victims. I'm very supportive of the Salem Kaiser School District and appreciative. I have lived here my entire life. I went to Morningside Elementary School, and then I also went to Leslie Middle School when it was still connected to South Salem High School. And then I graduated from South Salem High School in 1989. I am raising my family here. I have three children that are products of this school district as well. I have a daughter that graduated just a few years ago and is a sophomore at OSU now. And I have a sophomore at South Salem High School, and I have a seventh grader who attends Leslie Middle School. So I deeply am committed to this community, and I know you are all as well through the work that you do through the schools. I wanted to just thank you for your time tonight and thank you for all that you do for making this a great place for my children to go to school. It was a great place for me to go to school and also for all the other children that are members of this district. I appreciate the work that you do. So, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for me? No? Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Assistant Superintendent Carlisle, Chair Kylo, Chair Lee, and members of the school board. My name is Kathy Hollowell, and I reside at 3367 Holiday Drive, South Salem, 97302. I am here tonight to speak to you on behalf of the elementary office managers and the school office specialists. We would like to ask that as you prepare for next year's budget, that you take a serious look at the workload in our elementary schools and support us by reinstating the school-based health assistance. Some of you may recognize me from the front office here in this building, where I worked for 23 years. I thought I was the master at multitasking until I became an office manager in an elementary school where I learned its true meaning. At our school, we have two office staff and at least 45 students that may require med administration in a given day. It is imperative that when a staff member gives medications, that they devote their complete attention to each student and ignore all the other interruptions. Each thing we do in the office can be urgent. I'd like you to imagine dealing with a heated custody issue at the front desk, the phone is ringing, a teacher is calling for help in the classroom, a student was sent to the office with high behavior, another is needing bathroom assistance, a change of clothes, diabetic monitoring, insulin injection, or they're vomiting, they're bleeding, they have a head injury, or even a seizure. You're also thinking about all the other clerical duties that you have, the budgeting, all the main daily things. This setting creates a great deal of anxiety and a lot of room for error. Any mistakes that happen will not be due to a lack of training or support, but to the high volume of distractions that happen throughout the day and the massive amount of multitasking that we do. In the health room, if that were the only thing that we had to focus on and our attention was not so divided, we would be more confident in our ability to give each student the appropriate amount of attention they deserve and the proper medication. Every school has their own variety of intense health issues that require immediate attention to potentially life-threatening needs. None of us like to think about our children in danger, being hurt, or given the wrong medication, but we all know these things can happen. As an office manager, I like to take pride in welcoming students into classrooms, knowing that for me, the most important task ahead isn't teaching the three Rs, but ensuring that all children are healthy and safe. We need your help. Please restore our health assistance, keep our staff from risk of due process, and most important, keep our students safe. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Dickerman. Assistant Superintendent Carlisle, Chair Kylo, and the board members, good evening. My name is Nancy Dickerman, and I am the office manager at Richmond Elementary. I live at 38833 Ridge Drive in Scioula, Oregon. I am here on behalf of our office managers and school office specialists and our administrators and our teachers and our students. I can truly attest to what my colleague just presented to you guys. She did a great job. When I first started working with the school district, I didn't understand how important the safety of a child would be, a child that isn't yours. We come to school to work every day, and there are so many different scenarios that are presented in front of you. But one of the most important things in a child's life, when you are working in a broad spectrum of schools, is always consistency, the feeling of safety, the feeling of feeling secure with staff. Our children spend more waking hours with us in a school than they do in their home. And as a parent, I can relate to that because my kids spend more waking hours with their teachers than they do with me as a parent on a weekday. We have five days a week, unfortunately, and only two weekend days. But most important for me is their safety, whether it be my child or them. Inconsistency in an office is very important, not just when I go do my budget and I communicate with other departments, but when I am giving and providing medication to a student and I have 20 other things going on. I had an instance one time where I was providing medication to a student, and I had another student in a chair that was not having a very good day, and he zipped himself into a jacket, and he fell over, and blood was gushing everywhere. So I have two separate situations. Do I leave the child that I am in the middle of dispensing medication, or do I tend to the student? You have to make a choice every single day. And the inconsistencies do leave room for error, not because we are not trained, but because you have to make hard decisions every day in a school office. And I just ask that you take it into consideration when you bring up the new budget school year. I know that there's a lot of shortages, but just a moment of consideration. It's worth a try, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chairman Kylo. I know, I could say it all over again. You've heard it too many times tonight. My name is Laura Mack, and I am a parent, and I live at 3794 Saxon Drive House in Salem. And I'm also an art education advocate, and I'm here because I want to talk to you a little bit more about the fact that we don't offer art still. We don't have a systemic art program in any of the elementary schools in Salem Kaiser. Do y'all know Peter Courtney? Yeah? Yeah? We know Peter Courtney. He said, and I'm quoting here, "Don't let conventional wisdom limit your imagination." He was speaking to the interim Joint Legislative Committee for Student Success back in January, and he was tasking them with the, to figure out what's wrong. We know something's very wrong with our education system, but he was asking the Joint Legislative Committee to come up with some solutions, what's working, what's not working, what could we do better, and to avoid conventional wisdom, to come up with some new ideas. I learned by attending those legislative sessions, a lot about Measure 50, how the education system is funded. I learned about Measure 50 and Measure 5 and how they've screwed us since they came into existence. But I also, the most interesting thing I learned was from the business panel. There was a panel of a fiberglass company, there was a construction company, and also Para Group, the Para Group. And they all said that they're having trouble finding employees. They can't find people who are reliable, who are willing, and who are engaged as employees. And so they can't even get people to come into the state because our education system is so bad. Now, this is the broader problem with Oregon, but in Salem Kaiser, we can do something about it because we can work locally. We can come up with those innovative ideas to try to get those soft skills that our businesses need in order to fill these vacant positions across our district. The fact is, art teaches creative thinking skills, and part of creative thinking skills includes the ability to be reflective, to think critically, to show up, to be patient, to be curious, to take risks, and to know that there are lots of possible solutions to any given question. I don't think we need to limit our imagination that much when we're trying to get art into the schools again. We don't have We don't have to just focus on art teachers. We need to get a systemic art program into our elementary schools and art teachers are not the only way to do that. There are other fringe benefits besides what I listed in terms of those creative skills that art teaches. Did I already run out of time?
You have about 20 seconds.
Oh, okay. Cancel, cancel, stop, stop, stop. I thought I was on time, sorry. So to conclude, let me just say that we can do some really innovative ideas if we work together and collaborate. And some of those ideas include piloting an art teacher in a PBIS school to work with intervention, convention and support for our traditional students who are having trouble maintaining their academic abilities in classrooms that are continually interrupted by behavior issues. We can get kids to be a calming influence through art.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have something to add.
Okay. Marilyn Williams.
Good evening Superintendent Kelly Carlisle, good evening Chair Person Kylo and the board members. My name is Pastor Marilyn Williams and I'm here representing the NAACP. I'm here on behalf of, we're very happy to have the Equity and Diversity Department that Cynthia Richardson is leading. However, we feel that this still is a Band-Aid type account due to the fact that she needs more help. I understand the two people that's working and hitting the schools, but two people can't possibly do all the high schools and middle schools successfully. We need to see a little bit more help. She needs to have more help, not only for herself, but make sure that she has an assistant to help get out the memos and things that is needed. Band-Aids is fine for a certain point, but we need to make sure that that department runs successfully for students of color and for all students, because she's not just helping the students of color, she's actually helping all students. So all I'm asking is, I know we look at the budget, I know we're out there asking for the bond measure. I'm full support of the bond measure, so is NAACP, but we also want to see a full support of the Equity Department of having more people to work in the schools to get the students out and get the things that they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Board Activity Report. Anyone have anything they would like to report? Start at the far end Kathy.
I'm going to back up a little bit and I'm going to take a minute. The gal that spoke to us on the art and she ran out of time, but I want to tell you she had a wonderful idea that I got on my iPhone. And she suggested we make some art packs that are available to substitute teachers that come in. And occasionally the time factor is not the same for a substitute teacher as it is for a regular teacher. And she suggested these packets for students to do activities had all the materials right there in the building. And I thought it was a wonderful idea to have, to bring art into the classroom without hiring more people, making it an extraordinary deal. I thought it was a win on both sides and I hope she doesn't let that idea go. I thought it was terrific.
Okay, thank you. Sharon.
So I had the opportunity last week to attend a surprise event for former teacher Maureen Focal. Maureen was surprised with her induction into the National Teachers Hall of Fame representing Salem, Oregon and Salem Kaiser, I'm sorry. And Maureen is only the second teacher from the state of Oregon to be inducted. So it was a pretty amazing event and it was, it was really awesome because Maureen had no idea that she had been nominated or selected. There are only four teachers a year who are inducted and so, you know, pretty, pretty fantastic. And if you've ever met Maureen or been in one of her classrooms, she taught for 32 years in, mostly in West Salem, in our elementary, Chapman Hill, teaching science and now she volunteers her time and probably as much time as she spent in the classroom over at Lee Elementary. You know, just expanding the minds of really young students, teaching them the value of science and getting them excited. And, you know, she oftentimes has taken students to Washington DC, she's taken students, you know, throughout the state. And just an amazing individual and teacher who is, who's, you know, represented Salem Kaiser for many, many, many years. And this is an incredible honor and she was incredibly humbled and, but I just wanted to share.
Great. Okay, Chuck.
Last week I had the opportunity, it was a great opportunity to attend the National School Boards Association's annual convention. I was in San Antonio, Texas. A lot of great workshops. I was able to take some time and talk with educators throughout the nation and find out what's happening in their school districts and share the stories of what's happening in our school district. Saw a lot of old friends and saw some other people from Oregon too. So it was a great opportunity and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to have gone. Also, we're continuing to work hard on the bond measure. We've got a lot of yard signs. I've been pretty active in Kaiser up and down River Road with yard signs, but we're really struggling to get the word out as best we can. We're getting down to the point where we basically have a month left to go. And so I would urge all of you to get a yard sign, talk to your friends, attend a meeting, canvass neighborhoods and let's get this bond passed this year.
Thank you. Marty.
So a couple of weeks ago Governor Brown visited Washington Elementary, which is where my son went to school and I tagged along. And what we were learning about was students who have been impacted by trauma and students with disabilities and some of the challenges in educating these students and helping them to be able to actually learn constructively. You know, I've heard talk about it before, but I had no idea the depth of what is going on. And so anyway, it's very, very tragic, a lot of these kids and what they're trying to overcome.
Jessie. What's up? Okay, that's surprising. Assistant Superintendent Carlisle. Who are you?
Thank you. I'll start with some comments about the recent decision by the OSAA and the hearing. Obviously, we're not happy with the original decision that the OSAA made to place us in a league together with Bend. We're also very unhappy with the decision made by the hearings officer who denied our appeal. So we've been meeting with a group of concerned parents and community members for the last few months. And with their input, we've come up with a set of strategies that we feel will give us our best options for moving forward. One of those options that we considered was to withdraw from the OSAA, but after much discussion, it felt that this was not the right decision at this particular juncture. But we are not done with our fight. We will keep putting pressure on OSAA to make changes to their process and we'd like to have as much influence in that direction as possible even, even now. So we had hoped to secure a spot for Superintendent Perry on, to be on the executive board of OSAA. And with those hopes to internally introduce some meaningful change to their bylaws and processes, but we were not successful in that bid yesterday. So we will put that pressure on in other ways. We need our entire community to be united regarding the need for change in the process that OSAA uses to determine classifications and districting. Let's remember that last year, for a good portion of that year, the discussion was about five classifications instead of six, which could have opened up a number of possibilities that would not have required us to be in a league with schools on the other side of the mountains. If we have a united community front on this topic, that would be a good example of the kinds of external pressure that we can apply on the process. Meanwhile, our athletic directors are working on development of a strict travel protocol that will help us make the best decisions possible about whether to travel based on road conditions and weather forecasts. And our athletic directors are also working on some creative scheduling strategies, which is still a work in progress at the moment because each sport has a different way of scheduling competition, but I can share some examples if you're interested in that. Mostly what I want you to know is that we appreciate all of the input and concern that we've been receiving from interested parents and members of our community and to guarantee that we will continue to provide updates on this effort together.
Are you willing to take comments or suggestions at this time or questions?
Yeah, let's stay on the topic of OSAA and then I have some other comments.
Okay, anyone like to make a, Jessie?
First off, I'd like to say that I do not like at all the decision of the OSAA or the, the appeal and that whole process. One thing that I would like to note, especially to a lot of our community that's, that doesn't like the dollar sign that's attached to the decision that they made. This is, when, when we're looking at this, and I'd also like to suggest to our administration to really take a look at the opportunity to leave the OSAA. Not this year because currently we're already in the scheduling process for a lot of our kids and to, that would be kind of chaotic. So to really take a deeper look at what the, if there would be any repercussions of leaving and also if it's best for our students, because I think we need to keep in mind that is our goal to send our kids to the NFL or is our goal to give kids an actual education? And I think that's something that we really need to keep in mind when we take a look at this decision and the cost that comes with it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Marty? Chuck? Kathy's hands up. Kathy and Chuck. Go ahead.
I also want to thank you for all your support. Every one of us on this board has received all kinds of emails and responses and contacts from the general public and they coincide with our own ideas very well. None of us were in favor of sending our kids or putting them in danger by sending them in buses in bad weather to the eastern part of the state. But I want you to, want to thank you for hanging in there with us and I want to assure you that we are still working on it, every one of us. And we will come up, if not by the end of this school year, by next fall with some ideas that will help solve this. It'll get us closer to what we all agree that we want. And thank you.
Sharon, Chuck?
I really have nothing else to add at this point now other than, you know, commend the board members who have spoken. We'll hang in there.
Great, thank you. Kelly, back to you.
We are continuing to hold meetings in the community in each feeder area to make sure that people are getting the information they need relative to the bond package. We've had one meeting so far and our next meeting is Thursday evening, April 12th at 6:00 PM at North Salem High School. A few things that we're doing to make sure that folks know about these meetings and know how they can attend and participate. We've been putting ads in the newspaper and social media. We're encouraging our schools to invite parents and principals are even making some personal invitations to parents. But you don't need to be invited to attend. Please come if you are interested in getting some more information. We're also using our website and our external newsletter to, to share some announcements as well as some assistance from the chamber and other community meetings at their events. And although our attendance at West had 20 people in attendance, that particular meeting was recorded and is available online and there have been to date already 750 views of that particular video. So we know that it's having an impact in that direction as well. So I want to thank our folks who have been working on getting that information out to our, our communities. I want to announce that we are offering free CTE summer camps to our middle school students. Thanks to some grant money that came to us from the Oregon Department of Education, we're able to make some CTE learning activities available over the summer. Give middle school students sort of a sneak peek at what they can participate in, either already at the middle school level or even at the high school level. And our middle and high school teachers will be providing the instruction, the hands-on instruction for that. So we're pretty excited about that. And finally, a shout out to our students who came and shared from their work together and from their hopes and aspirations for our school district. You could have been home, you could have been anywhere and you chose to be here instead to share your input. And we appreciate that so much and respect the work that you've been doing this year. Thank you very much.
And with that, we are adjourned. So I'll see you all in two weeks. Superintendent's Budget Message.